Okay, Kathy, you also?
Yeah.
Everybody have their microphones on?
Yeah, seems to be.
Okay, we're gonna start the meeting. Good evening, welcome to the May 28th Select Board Meeting. I'm gonna say the introductions to after the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you can stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded, is also broadcast live, but from what we understand, there may be some garbled conversations at home. So if somebody hears this and it comes through either clear or garbled, could you text one of us, just let us know how it's coming through? So back to introductions, I'm John Martin, Reenie Groden, Francine Tishman, and Chris Fowles, our new Select Board Member. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chris won the last election, and we're happy to have her here. Would you like to say anything? Is that putting you on the spot, or?
No, I just thanks everybody for all your support, and I really look forward to working with everybody and learning a lot as I go along. So I'm here to do the best I can, so looking forward tonight. Thanks.
We welcome you, and think you make a great addition. And I want to thank Jim Labrie for serving on the board for, was it three, one term or two terms? But he put a lot of input, a lot of time into it, so Jim, if you're out there watching, thanks a lot, we really appreciate it.
Can we also send a letter to Jim?
We, yeah, we should send the letter to Jim of appreciation from the board. It's gonna be a hard night, I can tell already. Ed, would you mind putting that together for us?
I will do that.
Cool.
Thank you.
So a couple things before we get going is, because we're having still issues with ECAT, I asked Ed to put on the next agenda, if possible, get Jim Ramsey back here to talk to us about the status of our new equipment, because we've been having a lot of trouble in the last two months with broadcast, so I'd like to find out where they are with that. Anybody disagree with that?
No, good idea.
Okay. And for those of you who were not at the Memorial Day Parade yesterday, I thought it was a great event, had a lot of people turn out, and the Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, were all there in force, so I wanted to thank everybody. Richard Leclerc, I wanted to thank especially, along with Cindy Palmer and our own Reenie Groden for organizing that. So thank the three of you on that. And Lindsay Zapadosa showed up to march with us for a while, so thank you to her for that, that was appreciated. And Luanne Archambeau won the Citizen of the Year for her work with the food pantry at the church, so I'd like to congratulate her from the board. So back to the agenda, appointments, we have none. Hearings, we have none. Reports. Reenie, did you wanna start, or? Okay, yeah, she's taken out.
Yeah.
Okay, Ed, why don't you start with your report? Thanks.
All right, as a follow-up to my request at the last Select Board Meeting, representatives from Eversource are available to discuss the non-payment of the police detail invoices, which were done to protect the electrical lines in the aftermath of the February windstorm on, they're available on June 4th, anytime after 10:00 a.m. Would one or two members of the Select Board be available to meet with them, Chief Illingsworth and myself? And at what time on the 4th would be convenient for you?
I would be available.
I will not be available that day, unfortunately.
It depends on what anytime after 10:00 a.m. is.
Yeah.
If it's like 3:00, 4:00, or 5:00 o'clock, then I'm available. You can do anytime, Francine?
I'm available anytime that day.
So I guess, Ed, depending on what time you set it up, maybe let the rest of us know?
Okay, so you want me, would you like me to try to set it up for like 3:30?
If you can do that, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll let Chief Illingsworth know and have him set it up.
If not, Francine?
Thank you.
I'm assuming Francine, you'll go either way?
Yeah, that's fine.
Good. We can have up to two there, so.
I think that'd be great.
Let's see, the Highway Department has completed the installation of the signs at the Clearwater Woodlands Conservation Area, 111 Glendale Road, which is part of our grant reimbursement requirements. And let's see, I have been informed by the state that a third-party conservation restriction will be required for the nine-acre property known as the Howland Conservation Restriction in an area known as Manhand Meadows, and was accepted as a gift to the town of Southampton. My understanding from Virginia's lengthy spreadsheet is that originally, and I think it was in either 2009 or 2010, CPC funds paid for a conservation restriction to be put on the property while Howland still owned it. And then in 2017, the Howland's actually donated the property to the town, and CPC funds paid for the legal fees. This should be the last requirement needed for the Glendale Road grant reimbursement, and is also a requirement for the Palmeroy Meadow Road grant reimbursement. One of the newer requirements that the state has imposed on these grant requirements is to review all properties acquired through community preservation funding and making sure they have the correct conservation restrictions recorded for them.
So, Ed, what process would, oh, do you wanna go through them first and then, or can I ask a question?
Okay.
Would that be like Kestrel, or?
And I emailed Marla today because the property, while the deed says inhabitants of the town of Southampton, it is under the care and maintenance of the Conservation Commission, so I shot an email off to Marla asking, you know, if they had any preference on who that third-party may be, Kestrel or another vendor. She, well, she shot back a couple of other questions about, do we even need a conservation restriction? You know, we didn't acquire it with CPC funds. And a few others, she said that, you know, Kestrel would be fine, so I will actually reach out to Mark Wamsley and see what the process is for them to actually draft that and for us to get it in the final form and get it recorded in the Registry of Deeds.
So that's our choice, who we have?
Yes. Yeah, it's a, a conservation restriction cannot be held by the entity on the deed.
Right.
So, and this particular case, actually, the way it was set up, because that conservation restriction was originally done in 2010, when the Howland's owned it, the town held the CR. But when they donated it to us, we became both the owner and the individual or entity on the CR, so that's kind of where it fell apart.
Now, having to do the same thing with Palmeroy Meadow Road, is that gonna cause any delay, or are we gonna be able to beat the deadline?
Well, it's, this is one CR out of about of 11 they had us review, so it's actually tied to both properties.
Okay, good. What about additional cost?
There's probably some additional costs that are gonna be incurred, but because of the fact that it's actually a requirement of the two grants, it should be able to be funded out of one of the two pockets of money of our funding that are available. And then, on another note, MassDOT has completed, and don't confuse the two, I didn't know about this one, has completed the fieldwork for a speed study on the entire Route 10 corridor from East Hampton to Westfield. The findings in the area between the Polish National Credit Union and Gunn Road here in Southampton were that the 85th percentile in that area is 49 miles per hour. This is currently posted at 40 miles per hour. District 2 MassDOT has contacted me prior to submitting the final report to Boston, where they would be recommending a 45 mile-per-hour speed limit be established for that section. And they wanted to get our reaction to that possible increase in the posted speed. Both Police Chief Illingsworth, they contacted him separately, and I have expressed concern over an increase in the posted speed in that section of Route 10. Due to bicyclists, Chief Illingsworth reports that Bike Path in East Hampton is getting increasingly popular, and our residents are using Route 10 on their bicycles to get there. He also cited pedestrians. I had cited business locations and that the driveways to some of those business locations, while this isn't thickly settled, are, can be considered to be like on blind corners or decreased visibility for the driveways due to curves in the road along that section. I would like to also get the Select Board's opinion of this proposal so that I might take that opinion back to the engineer for MassDOT, Boe Lang, as I told him I would notify you and get your reactions, as well as Chief Illingsworth and myself.
Any thoughts from the board?
Yeah, I have a lot of thoughts. The reason why we even did this was to find out what the, it's very busy from Gunn Road past East Hampton Savings Bank, keepin' going to Palmeroy. So it's kind of interesting that we haven't got any feedback on that. That's why we asked for the study.
Well, we, this is a separate study. We did get the, we did get the feedback on the section between like Gunn Road and where the Dunkin' Donuts is. And that came back, I think it was, that the 85th percentile was 39 miles an hour, and they were gonna recommend to Boston a 35 mile-an-hour zone in that area, which is another reason that I find it, shall we say, concerning that, at least for the section, if you're traveling from East Hampton to Westfield, if it was posted at 45 rather than 40, and then you're gonna drop that to 35.
Yeah, doesn't make any sense.
In the opposite direction, 45 to 30.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, which is.
And my concern is just because people are going faster, so we make an accommodation by increasing the speed limit, doesn't really make sense to me. You know, it's hard enough for people to adjust, I think, from 40 to 30 here in town. So if you ratchet it up a little bit, it's just, I think, gonna confuse drivers about what it, really, what's the speed limit, you know, section by section.
Yeah, I wouldn't be in favor of raising it to 45. There's not only bicyclists, but the other day, I encountered several people walking down Zippas Hill toward the bowling lanes, and then, you know, people with baby carriages and everything walking down the side of that road, which is not very safe in its own right, so I would definitely not recommend that we go to the 45-speed limit.
I agree, and winter is even gonna get worse if you're going that fast. So, do you need a motion from us, Ed, or is that enough?
That's fine, I will.
Sounds like we're all on the 40 mile-an-hour.
In that section, yes.
Yeah, in that section.
And then the section out between Gunn Road and Palmeroy is currently what?
That's currently 40.
40, right now.
So it's 40 all along, and we were actually thinking about requesting a drop to 35 for that busy.
Well, we'd actually asked about 30, and their report is showing that they would request a drop to 35 in that section.
So do we wanna request actually lower than the 40 that's now? I mean, if you're slowing down to 30 here, I don't know about others, but unless I knew about it, it's tough, all of a sudden you're going 40, and hit 30, and there could be a police cruiser sitting out there, you know, it's, so if maybe it was 35, you'd be slow enough, you wouldn't go blowing through town quickly.
Yeah, and then when you get past the golf course, it's up to 50.
It's up to 50.
That's really such a variation in the speed on this little stretch of road.
Even on Palmeroy, when you're coming down, heading to Glendale and East Hampton, it's 40, and then it changes to 30 right at that intersection there. So it doesn't seem to be rhyme or reason, because it's so much busier on Palmeroy, by the bank.
So do we want to recommend actually going down to 35 in that section?
From 40?
I'm okay.
Right.
Yeah.
So if we're gonna do that, why don't we put it in a motion, so we'll have it in the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we request that the speed limit be dropped to 35 miles an hour from Gunn Road to Palmeroy Meadow Road. I don't know what it is from Palmeroy to the center of town. It's probably not, it's 40?
Central of town, I'm sorry, it's 30, and then jumps to 35, just past our place.
Yeah, so just 35 then?
And then it's 40 at one, and then she knows, um, bridge.
Right, when you go, start going up.
So the center of town is 30, so it'd be like?
Right here is 30.
Yeah.
So it'd be like 40, 35, 30.
35, 40.
So if we went 35, 30, and 35, that would make more sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, I'll make a motion that we reduce the speed to 35.
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So unanimous? I often think I save people tickets, because when I'm coming out of my street, I know what the speed limit is, and I stay slow, and the cars just kind of pile up behind you. Go ahead, Ed.
All right, and then upcoming, Board of Selectmen meetings for June are the 11th and the 25th.
Did you miss E?
Yeah.
No, E, I'd given at the last meeting, and for some reason, I hadn't scratched it off this report for tonight.
Yeah, but the files you sent were very, very interesting about that. So are we doing anything about?
Yeah, we've got that on the agenda, under new items.
Okay.
But as a follow-up, yeah, I did meet with Police Chief Illingsworth and Randall Kemp, our Highway Superintendent, last week. We actually went over the reports, we actually went out and physically looked at Gunn Road Extension and put together our recommendations.
Okay, so.
That's all I've got.
Two meetings are listed, the 11th and 25th.
I'm not sure if I'm gonna be able to make it to the 11th. I will let you know.
Let's see what we got. Everybody else here on the 11th so far? And the 25th?
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay, Chris, you're not gonna have any committee assignments, so we'll skip to Francine.
Okay. The Master Plan Committee met last week, they're continuing their analysis and their synthesis. We're gonna be prepared to present the report to the Select Board at a joint meeting, which will be either June 11th or June 25th. That's all depends on the availability of a group from Westfield Gas and Electric, the Whip City Fiber Optic Company, to come in and continue a conversation with us about fiber optics projects in this area, and whether or not that would be something we would want to join in and benefit from. Bylaws Committee from last week was canceled, it's rescheduled for this Thursday, and the Norris School Committee is tomorrow night. Thank you.
Reenie, do you have anything?
Yep, com-com, Matt, 520, and like Ed said, Clearwater Woodlands Conservation Area, the sign is up, thank you very much to the Highway Department for that. And then also, like we mentioned last time, the parking lot looks great. They also discussed getting going with forest plans on conservation land, which was an article from the town meeting, did establish that. And again, I'll be coordinating a volunteer drive for trail maintenance. CPC and COA both meet next week. And then, John, you can probably report on open space, I wasn't at the last meeting.
Okay. Safety Complex meeting is scheduled for June 13th at 4 o'clock, if anybody's interested in attending that. There hasn't been one in a while, so it should be interesting.
Date, was that again?
June 13th, 4 o'clock. And Open Space Review Committee, next.
Can I record, so that be videotaped?
Sure.
Thanks.
Ed, can you see if ECAT can be there to videotape?
You don't here?
Uh, I believe so?
Yeah.
It says second-floor meeting room is what I have here.
Okay, so for the second-floor meeting room, you can do that automatically?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have something different, Tammy?
It's just, yeah, it can be recorded, it can't be broadcast, right?
Right. Okay, so we can, we'll record it up there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. And Open Space Review Committee, next one is June 13th, and that is here, at 6 o'clock. And the last one, we reviewed the two info sessions and the hike that was sponsored by the Open Space Review Committee, and those went all very well, they were well-attended. I think people were very well-informed on that. I enjoyed the one I went to. We discussed the signs for Clearwater, Marla brought some information on that and showed us these signs, those are already up, so that went up quickly. We discussed the future of the committee, it's an ad hoc committee, but we have that later on our agenda to talk about that, so I won't say anything. Diana, do you remember who brought the maps in? Was it Marla? You brought them in?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Well, they were in Ed's office for a while, and he left them here, and I think I gave them to Ed.
So we have some maps of the conservation areas in town that we're getting prices on mounting them, and then we're gonna.
We've already proceeded with that.
Yeah, I got that, but we haven't decided which way to go with that, right?
No, actually, we did decide that, and that's a cheaper option.
Okay, so we're, once they're mounted, they're gonna be in the second-floor conference room on display, so everybody can reference them. And they were, they were very good maps, very detailed, so it was good that we had them. Did either of you have anything more to say on the open space that you wanna add, or?
Just probably thank Marla for getting the signs, and Ed.
You're gonna have to come up here, sorry.
Well, I didn't know the sign was up, so I'm very happy to hear that. I was just up there, like a day or two ago, and so it's brand-new, and the parking lot is just great, just couldn't be better, in my opinion. So we're just really grateful to the people who engineered that.
Yeah, that was the Highway Department.
Mm-hmm.
Good, thank you. Okay, next Planning Committee meeting isn't for a couple of weeks, I'll be at that one. I think that's all I have. Well, actually, there's this email from you, Diana. You and Cindy Palmer mailed out 150 packets to the landowners with a final letter, resources, and contacts. So that's all done. Thank you for doing that. Fiscal '19 Budget and Revenue Review. The revenues are through April 4th, so they should be roughly 75%. And the expenses are through May 16th, which is roughly 88%. The revenues, a lot of the revenues are lower than 75, but Francine and I were talking about that, the taxes aren't due till when is it, Francine?
What, the tax?
Tax bills?
They was due May 1st.
May 1st? And those don't show up yet, because this only goes through April 4th. So hopefully by next meeting, we'll have those updated. And the expenses, I keep saying at every meeting, but the departments are doing a great job of staying within their budgets, and majority of them are below the 88%. A few are above, but there's reasons for that in most cases, so I was happy to see that. And again, thanks for all the department heads for sticking to the budget and helping out. Any comments on either of those?
I have a question about, on the expense, under Public Works and Facilities. Ed, maybe, or John, if you know, storm water permitting. It's a $27,000 budget item, and it's zero spent. What's that, is that the new regulation on that, or what's the scoop on that?
Yes, that's our contract with a tie-in bond, and they're just finishing up that work, so they just haven't built this.
Nil bills for the whole amount, the $27,000?
Yeah, most of it, most of it at once, yes. And that would, actually, a small portion of that, well, actually, a small portion of that, even though it was developed by Pioneer Valley Planning, was that mailing stuffer that the Board approved to go out for, on the grass clippings and the tax bills.
Right.
As we're getting closer to the end of the fiscal year, we gotta make sure we get those bills in this fiscal year.
Yeah, right.
I'm sure Ed's on top of that.
Try my best.
Okay. Old budget, Hampshire Regional Budget Expenditure, a placeholder for now. East Street Bridge update, it is going on the ballot for $1.6 million debt exclusion. We'll talk about that a little later.
And just as another update, the VHB was able to go out and utilize some newer, newer technology, or I shouldn't say new tech, I should just say new, not newer, technology, and do the cross-section study of the stream bed using buoys, rather than waiting to do it the old-fashioned way. So they were able to get out there and do that last week. So now they don't have to wait for the rainy monsoon season to start, so.
Did you say buoy, like?
B-U-O-Y, yes, yes, yep.
I guess that's a side conversation, how that works? Okay, so now we're down, new business, we did the welcome and the thank you, now.
We didn't talk about the Select.
Oh, you're right, the Select Board?
Yeah.
Select Board Annual Report, really should say Select Board Section of the Annual Report, because that's what we're concerned with right now, and.
But ours is done, but what about the other sections?
There was a couple items.
There's some edits from the last meeting that I don't have, and I really need those draft minutes from you, Kathy, so. Because Judy has added the licensing reports to that one, but I did remember that there was a couple of small edits that were asked for to finalize your section.
And to Reenie's question, we don't believe there's any penalty involved with timing of this, correct?
Not that I understand, but I will double-check on that.
But the other departments are submitting their sections?
Yeah, I've gotta get after some of them, but we've got a decent amount that are in.
When do we normally put out the annual report?
In May.
Yeah, it's supposed to be out.
So, Ed, can you give them a deadline?
Yes.
Of soon?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, two items here, Board to reorganize and Board to assign liaisons. Matt's not here, and he actually sent me an email, and Ed asking if we could postpone both of those to when the whole Board is here. Does anybody have a concern or issue on that?
No, I think that's a good idea.
No, but I would, I would ask that we have a list of current assignments.
They're in the packet.
There?
Yeah. They're on page, let me look up here. 38.
Should be on page.
What page?
Yeah, 38.
38.
I made one correction to the planning that we were just talking about before.
My 38 is purchase and sale agreement.
In box?
No.
In box? Is that where you are?
Oh, no, I'm in the PDF that.
Oh, yeah, if you go in box, it's on page 38.
It's part of printout, or is it in the box?
It's in.
I thought it was the same. I thought the attachment he sends out is the same as what's in box, no?
Ed, a question to you. Reenie was saying she thought the file you sent out was the same as in box number, the same way and everything, is that?
No, the box numbers can only be done, it's gotta be entered into Dropbox. You have to read the Dropbox, put the page numbers in. You then have to take that file out and re-scan it and put it in, so they are slightly different.
So not user-friendly at all.
So is the PDF that you sent out, does that have the current committees and assignments?
The PDF does not, they were added afterwards.
Okay, I'll check the box, then.
I've got an extra copy here for you, you can have.
I just wanted, hopefully, to make a decision as a group, do we have liaisons to appropriate committees? It's been a process, I think we're getting better, but in the beginning, I think there were liaisons to department heads, and we got rid of that idea.
We did.
So I just wanna make sure that we, they're not missing committees. I don't think all committees need to have a liaison, but some of them are voting members. So anyway, I also wanna decide whether or not we need to continue to be liaisons to all the departments we currently are, and are we missing anybody? Thanks.
So if everybody can look at these over the next two weeks, I guess. I know, at least from my point of view, at some of the meetings, planning meeting last time is, by sitting there, they have, they see you in the audience, they have a question, they can ask you the question. So we got, you're right, though, we gotta have the right one, so we don't spin our wheels. Okay, so next is Select Board, gonna sign the purchase and sale agreement for 68 Palmeroy Meadow Road. Hooray. Ed, you wanna pass that around?
Sure. There are two copies. There are two copies of it. Could be signed, please.
Officially announced yet?
Should be. Ed, has this been officially announced to anybody yet, or this is the...
This is it.
Okay, we're signing the purchase and sale for 68 Pomeroy Meadow Road. Hooray.
Time's up.
Yes.
For those people out there who thought we'd never do it, it's done.
Which includes all the lots.
Yeah, a lot of hard work by a lot of people.
I think people knew something was up, because all those for-sale signs were down.
Yeah, it took a while, but it came together very quickly over the last week to 10 days.
Unfortunately, at town meeting, it passed very favorably.
And the current owner signed the purchase and sale agreement on Friday, and I went to their attorney's office and picked it up, so it was ready for our signatures tonight.
And we need the closing by the end of June to get the grant. Correct, Ed?
That is correct.
Yeah, so... Barring any obstacles, we'll be all set. Thank you.
Christina wants to be recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up, Christina. You were involved with this, so feel free to say a few words.
Thank you, Christina Madson, Rattle Hill Road. I think that I would like to commend Ed for his steadfast and very capable handling of a complicated negotiation, and so you really did a great job, Ed. Thank you.
It was a group effort, so...
Well, it was, and Kurt Bojolli was also great to work with, very supportive of the project, and also without his knowledge of the area and his commitment to having that saved, the project wouldn't have gone through. And then, of course, we have Diana and Mark Walmsley to thank for writing another outstanding grant application, so thanks to all.
And to you as well.
Thank you, and I'll just, if this is the appropriate time, just say that Andrea and I are proceeding as we said we would, and it's not a quick project, but it's methodical. The process has begun, so eventually, it will become that 90 acres, and I will keep you up to date. We have to do the, all the usual things of appraisal, survey, and those two things we will get done this summer, and then writing the CR, and I'll get back. But it is, it is in progress, so it's really a pleasure to have been part of this team to...
I think you, speaking at town meeting, got people energized to pass this, so thank you for doing that. You didn't have to.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Right, thank you.
And as a, another little update on the Pomeroy Meadow Road, just would like to say that even though Kurt Bojolli is, didn't run for another term, and his term has expired, he has a huge interest in making sure this project comes to completion, and everything's in line for the reimbursement. He's still working on making arrangements and making sure DEP has to have a public hearing on it at the Springfield office, which I think is gonna be scheduled for June 12th. That notice has to go into the paper, and Kurt is still out there keeping an eye on a lot of other things and making sure that they happen in a timely manner, so I want to thank Kurt for all his help along the way with this.
And I think it would be appropriate saying thank you to Kurt here, but also sending him a letter of appreciation from the board as well.
Ed, could I just mention, back on, when we were talking about committee assignments, just on the handout that you gave me, it says PPPB, only because it's a voting member, it says Knickie and Groden. It's actually Matt Rowland, okay?
It's Rowland, yes.
Okay. I thought I had changed that, so, thank you.
Okay. Gun Road Extension Traffic Control Request. It's on page 49. So, traffic recommendations from the Police Chief, Highway Superintendent, and Town Administrator. Do you want to go over this, Ed, or you just want me to read the recommendations?
I can probably try to summarize the two reports for you, is that there was an eastbound and a westbound study, both done for two-week periods, and these were both done while school was in session. The average speed of the eastbound study was 30.33 miles per hour, and the 85th percentile speed is what they will usually look at to set speed limits, was 33.39. And then, on the westbound side, it was very similar. The average speed was 30.99 miles per hour, and the 85th percentile speed was 33.38. So, overall, not a huge amount of speeding, but if you look at those reports, you will see that there are some intermittent times during both morning and evening rush hour, while you will get some outliers.
Block time looks pretty...
Yeah, especially in the afternoon, so what the police, what Chief Hillingsworth, Randall Kemp, and myself came up with, looking at it, is, one, is part of that original letter was if we, if the town would install a notification of a deaf child signage, and that is one of our recommendations, because there's a deaf child that lives on a portion of Gun Road Extension, so two of those signs, one in each direction, to notify people coming up on that area.
Is that just a matter of us ordering the signs? The Highway Department puts them in?
Yeah, all of these are, shall we say, a matter of ordering, and these are all advisory signs to the most part. We also recommend installing the yellow 20 mile per hour advisory signs in both directions, and I will call that on the lower portion of Gun Road Extension.
I believe you said 20, but it's 25.
Twenty-five.
Okay.
Twenty-five. And that's where it gets probably a little bit, as you're heading towards Route 10, it gets a little bit windy with the curves and whatever, so we want to notify the people going down after the ball fields and coming back up from Route 10 of that. And then, the last piece of the puzzle, what the chief was recommending, and we won't say any particular times or whatever, but we would like to do increased manned police radar patrols on that at intermittent timeframes, which are identified where there would be most pertinent in those two analyses, but these would be manned patrols that are able to actually issue tickets rather than just putting the signage out. And hopefully, with all these steps, that we will get the message out there that, okay, it is thickly settled, then you're coming, you're coming up on a school, you've got some elevation change, and you got some curves, and to be driving more carefully than you may be already, especially during those two rush hour periods.
So you don't need anything from us, do you?
No, but I wanted to let you know that study has been completed, that we have come back with some recommendations to implement. Randall's gonna order the signs. I mean, if the board did not like what we are recommending, or wanted to do something different, I would doubt...
I have two questions. One is, do we need permission of the family to put up a sign that there's a deaf child? And the second question is, this came about because of many residents of that street wrote a letter asking for some sort of traffic thing. How can we let them know that something's been done?
I may not have, I'll have to go back and see if we've got all of the addresses. If we don't, I remember, I think it's the first person on there, we can get the message out to, out to him to get to the neighbors on that. But as far as the deaf child, it was actually the family that had...
That suggested, okay.
Yeah, that had requested it, so...
Okay. Thanks.
And plus, you can refer them to the recording of the meeting.
Yeah, that's true.
There we go.
Okay, resignation, Megan Gentile from the Parks Commission. No paperwork on that.
It's all something. She's moving, that's why she resigned.
Yes.
Unfortunately, yes.
So are they gonna come forward with somebody, once they find somebody?
I believe they will, but I will, I will remind them if they know of someone to bring them forward, or if they would like us to do an announcement, or a joint announcement to find people that are interested.
I was gonna say, I think we just announced there's a vacancy, so if there's anybody out there who's interested, they could see Ed. He'll direct them.
Yeah, and this would, it's an elected body, so a, an appointment to fill that vacancy by the Select Board would be active and continue through the next annual town election in May of 2020.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we'd also need the Parks Commission to appoint a representative to the Master Plan Committee, because she played that role as well.
So you would like that done sooner than later, I would think?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Open Space Review, Ad-Hoc Committee Discussion. I asked Ed to put that on there because of the ad hoc issue, and I think the committee, what we discussed was after Pomeroy Meadow Road got settled, we would talk about if we should stay ad hoc, or should go on a more permanent basis. But I'm almost wondering if we should wait for Matt for that discussion? What's your thoughts?
I think, I think it'd be good to have a full committee discussion about that.
Okay. Ed, if you can just put that on the next agenda.
Sure.
Town Administrator Evaluation.
Just mentioning one more thing.
Sure.
I think it would be helpful to me if there was, I mean, the ad hoc committee started because, well, it was pretty much in response to Glendale Road, and then it's, then we'd quickly move from one property to the next, and then a grant to the next, and I think it would be really helpful for me to understand where the sort of jurisdiction of the Master Plan Implementation Committee is relative to the Conservation Commission relative to the open space. That would help me to understand the discussion about whether it should be a full committee versus ad hoc.
Okay.
Yeah, I think once we figure out what, if we want to go with a full committee, we need to figure out what the charge would be, which is saying exactly what you are.
Right. And one of the things that the Master Plan Implementation Committee is finding is, there are some places where there are overlaps, and then there are some places where there are gaps. So, we're trying, part of this presentation and the analysis and synthesis of all of the information that's contained in that report will come forward, and then hopefully we'll identify a clear path for those kinds of decisions that the Select Board will make, but it's an appropriate question, certainly.
And I think since the Master Planning Implementation Committee was kind of dormant for a while, by having it resurrected, and a lot of people on it that want to push it forward, I think these committees can work together.
Yeah.
Very well. Okay, Town Administrator Evaluation. Ed sent us his self-evaluation. I think we need to take a meeting to look at it and put it back on the next agenda?
Yes. I would, I would recommend that.
Okay. You all agree?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I agree. We don't need to vote for that, right?
Nope.
I was just looking at my notes from the purchase and sale agreement back to the Pomeroy Meadow, and it says in it, I don't know if this is standard language, or if it even matters, but I just meant to mention it. We just did it quickly, and I got the hard copy to sign. It says here, "Cella has not granted any options, rights of first refusal, or other contracts have been granted or entered into, which would give any other party a right to purchase or acquire any interest in the promises." So, premises, that doesn't apply to this scenario, right?
As I read that, there's just no other, there's no other parties interested.
No other besides us.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because we're not going on the first right of refusal, we're just buying it outright.
Right.
Right. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
No problem.
Thanks.
So, another issue just came up as I'm looking at this. Our next agenda is June 11th, and if you're not gonna be here, you can let us know.
Yeah.
We've got several items we postponed because we didn't have a full board, so we'll, I think we'll postpone it to the meeting after that, if you're not here. But if you are, we'll put it. Sound reasonable?
Yeah, I'm trying to reschedule, so I'm not sure if I'm gonna be able to.
Whatever's good. We're nursing coals up here, evidently, a few of us, so it's good that you're all in the back row. Any other necessary business that can't await the June 11th regular Select Board meeting?
It got crossed out.
It got crossed out, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
We crossed out that, because I believe that they're sending her to Hampshire Regional?
Yeah, she made the decision she's gonna go to Hampshire Regional.
Yeah, yep. Yep. Okay. You're welcome. Anything else before we go on? No? Okay, PCFs, we don't have any. Licenses, permits, we don't have any. Warrants, Francine, you signed all of these?
Yes, okay. Warrant W-19-41V for a credit of $120. Warrant W-19-43C2 for $1,025. Warrant P-19-43V2, a credit of 125. What happened is the check expired, hadn't been cashed, so we had to issue a new one, so it was just not additional money, just a switch. And then warrant PD-19-43V3 for a credit of $523.60, and warrant W-19-47 for $365,060.21.
Absolutely good.
Thank you, Francine.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna back up to other items that can't await the June 11th regular Select Board meeting. It can, but I figured we'll read it into it. This is a letter dated May 17th to Lucille Dalton, Town Clerk, from the Office of the Attorney General regarding Southampton Annual Town Meeting of May 7th, 2019, case number 9381. May 7th, 2019, that's, okay, Articles 6 and 31, we approve Articles 6 and 31 from the Southampton, May 7th, 2019, Annual Town Meeting. It says, "Pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 32, neither general nor zoning bylaws take effect until the town has first satisfied the posting, publishing requirements of that statute. Once the statutory duty is fulfilled, one, general bylaws and amendments take effect on the date these posting and publishing requirements are satisfied unless a later effective date is prescribed in the bylaw, and two, zoning bylaws and amendments are deemed to have taken effect from the date they were approved by the town meeting unless a later effective date is prescribed in the bylaw and is signed by Kelly Gunnigan, who's the Assistant AG." So, that just says those articles were approved. So, it's on the record. Okay, now, signing of the special election warrant for June 18th. We have three debt exclusions. That's page 82 in the box file. Okay, would you like me to read these, Ed, or do I need to read these?
I can, if you want me to, or...
I guess they're short enough, I would, I wouldn't mind if you read them. That way, they'll be read into the record.
Sure.
And I have a question before we vote on them, but go ahead.
Warrant for special town election, June 18th, 2019. Town of Southampton, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Hampshire SS, to the Constable of the Town of Southampton in said county. Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Southampton... you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Southampton qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to elect by AccuVote ballot on Tuesday, the 18th day of June 2019, at the Town Hall, 210 College Highway in said Southampton for the following debt exclusion ballot questions. Ballot question one, shall the Town of Southampton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay costs for the construction, fees, permits, engineering, design, temporary or permanent easements, or any other eligible costs associated with the construction of a new East Street Bridge and to the demolition of the existing East Street Bridge, including any and all incidental and related costs? Yes, no? Ballot question two, shall the Town of Southampton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay costs for the purchase of a new dump truck with plow and seander body for the Highway Department, including any and all costs incidental related thereto? Yes, no? Ballot question three, shall the Town of Southampton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to pay costs for the Norris Elementary School Improvement Project, including design, bidding, fees, permits, and construction consisting of sink replacement in the science labs, classrooms, replacement of carpeting in several of the classrooms, replacing and repairing some of the exterior doors in the school, as well as repairs and caulking of the roof gutters, roof drains, and roof drains cuppers, and repairs to the exterior masonry and mortar of the building, including any and all other costs incidental or related thereto? Yes, no? The polls will be open at 12:00 PM and remain open until 8:00 PM. You are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof at the Town Hall in said Southampton, and notices of the same usual places in said town seven days at least before the time of holding said town election. Hereof fail not and make due return of the warrant with your doings thereon to the Town Clerk at the time and place of elections aforesaid, given under our hands this 28th day of May, 2019. Select Board of Southampton," and then your signatures.
Okay, so the question I had just for discussion is hearing from some people about whether we should put the amount of each debt exclusion on the, or each article, each ballot question, so that people know how much each will cost them. And if we do, and Jennifer, if you, do you mind me reading from this email from Bon Consul?
Oh, no, that's fine, that's actually from clerk.
From. Oh, it's not from Unibank? Okay. Okay. Oh, he spoke with Bon Consul, and they were okay with a dollar amount being shown. It says, "DOR typically is not okay with it, but other than grumbling, they will let it go." The important part of this is how you include it in the election warrant and on the ballot. The wording should be perenns, so-called the amounts required to pay the debt service for the X whatever dollar amount bond issued in order. That is, you want to say debt service, which means principal and interest. Otherwise, someone may say only the principal amount cited, and the question can be excluded. So the question is, do we want to add the amounts of each of these on here? And Lucy gave me the exact amount, so if we want to put them in here, we've got the amounts, we can put them in, I would think by hand, sign off on it, and then it'll be transferred into a written document, or a typed document. But the question is, do we want to put them on here?
I think for the town meeting, they were listed, at least what the request was, and they all passed.
Yep.
So I think that in the email.
Have to come up here, Jen.
Jennifer Day, Treasurer Collector. In the email at the bottom, it says that it should be written, the ballot question, as it was written in the article.
Right.
And I think the articles had figures.
Yeah, they did.
So.
And I'm gonna disagree, I mean, it is DOR regulations that the amounts do not appear in these particular debt exclusion questions. And the other thing I'm gonna bring up is the fact that, actually technically, the board, and you voted on this, 35 days in advance of the special election needed to approve the language.
Yeah, and here, Jennifer, says the wording must be exactly the same in both the election warrant and the form on the ballot. So to me, this is the election warrant that we're looking at now, and the form on the ballot just has to mirror that? I'm not seeing where it has to go back to the town meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
I may be wrong, but that's, that's what it says.
Yeah, there's just been, I mean, I think people are just concerned that people are going to vote no because they don't know what they're voting on, as far as the figure goes. And that's what I've kind of heard around town, and so.
Yeah.
People are just concerned that it won't pass due to not being able to know the number.
I agree, I was talking to Lucy before the meeting, and to me, if I'm voting on something, I'd like to see how much it's costing me. Of course, the other side of that is you see how much it's costing you, and you vote no, but you know. But these are three that passed at town meeting quite handily. So what's your thoughts?
I think we follow the rules, if the DOR says that it doesn't include the language, and we already have a window that we would have needed to change, then I think we keep as it is. We had the dollar amounts, and they all passed at town meeting. I think it's very hard to compute principal and interest when we don't know what the amount's gonna be right now.
Right.
Are there other ways of getting the news out to the, to the residents as to what those amounts are, if we can't put it on the ballot? Because I too would think that people would really want to be sure what they're voting on, and if we can do it via the newsletter, via some other, some other means of publication.
Sorry, Tammy. Now, it says, "The amounts required to pay the debt service for the X dollar bond." So in the case of the truck, which is $250,000, are they saying we put the 250,000, or we put the amount that includes the interest in it? I was gonna ask you, sorry, Jen.
I have the email.
Pardon? Do you want to see that?
So I'm think, it's, yeah, can I see it?
Absolutely.
All right, let's see. I mean, when I look at this, I would think that you would only have to put the amount of the actual bond, the $250,000 bond, which means principal and interest, otherwise. I mean, I would have to ask clerk, but.
That's what it seems to say, but it also says that it includes the interest, so you're telling the person they'll be interested on there.
And that may be one of the reasons that DOR's recommendation is you don't put dollar amounts in here, because, you know, what, do you break it down that way? Or do you break it down, because really, it only flows to the tax rate on the annual principal and interest, and not on the whole amount?
Yeah.
And we're not gonna know.
In the past, haven't we put dollar amounts, though?
Pardon me?
In the past, haven't we put dollar amounts?
Uh, one of the, one of the ones that I saw from, that Lucy showed me was the same format with no dollar amounts.
No dollar amount?
Yeah.
Can we put informational?
We've probably done it both ways.
Could.
Can we give them information, like an informational piece?
Yeah, I don't know if we can hand out an informational postcard, or have it at the table, is that?
Yeah, my other question is, how are we going to educate people? I mean, A, what this all says, and B, what it, what it costs, if that question comes up.
People, I just think, you know, and many people think, you know, they're gonna want to know the cost.
They want to know how much it's gonna cost them in taxes, for what period of time.
But I know the moderator usually has, I don't know if you're planning for this, usually has an information session for people that's, that's broadcast, is that right, Robert? I mean, that's one vehicle.
Hey, Jen? Jen?
I heard half of that, I didn't, don't go away. The information session is, is a great idea, but it would be not part of a town meeting, would be the election, but, yeah, no, it goes out live, people see it, so.
Okay, so that's one, one way of getting it.
Band-aid.
I think the only issue, this goes out live, and you hear people say, "How come this was never discussed?" And we say, "Well, it was discussed at a couple of meetings." So I'm gonna sense too, that a lot of people don't listen to that meeting either. It's the same people that listen to both, probably. So a handout or something, I think, would be great if we can do that.
Tammy Rolinas, 298 College Highway. Charlie Knickie, well, is it the Capitol Improvements came and performed here? And then again, at the meeting for everybody. Maybe if we can get that information between Facebook and, and the Southampton News email that goes out, we can actually get those numbers out, and maybe work with Jen to see, so that people can see what the breakdown is per $1,000.
Yep.
Have that information, because when you're getting your ballot, a lot of times you can't see what's on that table, you're getting rushed through.
Yeah.
So.
I was thinking of handing it out even. And the other issue is, this is only for three ballot questions, so hopefully we get enough people that, we don't need a minimum, but I'd like to see more than 50 people vote on this. So it sounds like if we can get an informative pamphlet together to explain everything, that would be better than changing the wording in here. And it's the 18th, the election?
Yes.
So, and do we want to bring Charlie as the Chair of the Capitol Improvement Committee to the June 11th meeting, and have him re-discuss these three items? Or do we just want the information, we can discuss it?
I think he's already presented prior to the town election, I think. I mean, the other issue is, I mentioned last time, I think that people are gonna be tripped up over the wording, exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2. People are gonna think it's an override. You have to educate people about it, the schools, if they want, you know, all that repair work done. You know, the dump truck is clearly needed, I mean, it's just, it's difficult, but it's not impossible to get the word out.
Yeah. Okay, so Ed, can we, oh, hi. I've gotta look up once in a while.
Diana Fetterman, Birchwood Drive. I would just suggest that you contact a reporter at the Gazette. I know some of you have connections, and they're usually, you know, pretty hungry for a story, so it's not a bad idea.
Very good idea.
The other thing I think is important, to have people understand, whatever information we put out, it is, only includes the principal and interest for each year, not on the total amount, so that people can understand how, well, I don't want to use this word loosely, minimal the impact will be, but it will not be as substantial as if it were on the, on the whole thing, as it would in a regular override. I think that's important.
So basically, Gazette reporter would do a flyer with the total cost, and how much per thousand on the tax rate, and then also the term for each, because these are different terms in here.
Is the amount affected by any retiring debt, too?
Well, again, that automatically goes back to the town. This is just re, rededding, if you will, to, yeah, we can't switch one for the other.
Right.
Anything we've missed, or any more suggestions? Because it's important we get these passed, obviously.
The agenda does say signing, do we have to sign?
Yes, we have to sign, we all have to sign at the, at the end here. So if there's no other question, Ed, do you have the original?
I do.
You wanna pass it along?
Do we have to vote on it, too?
We have to vote.
Yep, we have to have a vote, take a.
I'll make a motion, we sign the special election warrant for June 18th, as is.
Okay, is there a second?
One second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Chris, you're signing for about $1,008,000 here, so how's that for your first signature? Okay. There you go. I think it says something about one time at the podium, but I'm, I'm just kidding.
Tammy Rolinas, 298 College Highway. Is this an election that people could vote early if they needed to, or no?
Good question. Don't know the answer.
Because if so, then we really gotta get the information out.
Is Lucy still here? Do you know?
I thought she was coming back.
Oh, that's right, she had a 6:30, and she was coming back. So I have to ask her.
Okay, I just.
It's a great question.
Okay.
And while it may not be early voting, per se, I would still believe that they can absentee vote.
Yes, I am absentee, sorry.
So we'll check with Lucy. Okay, we had minutes to approve, but that's scratched on, on both the open and the executive session, they're not ready. Pending items, on, one thing I added when I saw this is the College Highway update. Ed's gonna put it under pending items, because that's still being worked on. If you want to pencil it into yours.
You mean the traffic study?
No, the land in College Highway.
Oh, right.
We don't want to lose track of that. Okay, Select Board meeting, anything on the pending items that anybody wants an update on? Those are just there, why they're being worked on.
Well, we're gonna have someone come and talk about the bike trail, right? Get an update on that.
Yeah. What is, did you finally get a date with the Chair?
I have not.
Is there a reason why he's not coming, or just timing issues?
I know he travels a lot for his work, so I will try again.
Is there a vice chair?
I'll find out.
Yeah.
They did a reorganization, excuse me, reorganization, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, bless you.
Thank you.
And on the Green Communities, Gran, the plan is to maximize, we have to, do we have to purchase things first to see what the savings would be from like the lighting, LED lighting at the school? Can you remind me about what's happening with that?
Basically, probably the low-hanging fruit is the LED lighting at the school and the lighting in here, in addition to the.
Insulation?
The insulation in the attic. And then I would like to, because the lighting at the school came back at a lot less than I ever anticipated, we've still got a good amount available, so I would like to take a look and see what makes sense, whether it's lighting at the library, or if it's, might be HVAC controls in this building, or some of our older heating systems for replacement, that would give us the best bang for the buck.
So we, do we make a proposal of potential savings, submit it, and then get the reimbursement? And is there a deadline for getting this $130-something thousand?
The $138,000 is ours. We have to propose to DOR how we want to spend that, and then they will approve those projects. And then we go out and contract for those.
Okay, and is there a deadline for us to submit that, to get it?
Sorry, I didn't hear the answer.
Oh, no.
No? Okay, thanks. Okay, since Lucy just walked in, Lucy, can, do you have a second to come up? We had a question. It's on the special election. And the question was, is there either early voting, or absentee voting on special election?
No early voting, there'll be absentee voting.
Absentee voting? Yep, good. So we're gonna get that out there. Okay, thank you. Okay. Open time for the public. Is there anybody out there who would like to speak on anything? No? Okay, thank you. So we're gonna go into executive session, and we're not gonna return to open session. So I'm gonna, we have two executive sessions, I'll read them out. Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 3. Thanks all for coming. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. This is the Police Officers, New England Benevolent Police Association. Second session is for the same laws and sections for the dispatchers, New England Benevolent Police Association need a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we go into executive session.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please? Martin, aye?
Fishman, aye.
Falls, aye.
Okay, going into executive session after five-minute recess.